Counsel Barton?
Present.
Present. Counsel Chakoudis?
Present.
Present. Counsel Calucci?
Yes, present.
Present. Counsel Field?
Present.
Present. Counsel Hogan?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lapierre? Absent. Counsel Ozy?
Present.
Present. Counsel Net?
Present.
Present. Counsel Staubert?
Present.
Present. Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present. Counsel Seer?
Present.
Everyone rise for a moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to our republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Seven minutes. So moved. Superior City Council. Motion made.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Communications? We have no communications. Public hearings. We have the petition of Margaret and Sarah, 29 Parsons Drive, Swamski, to allow the City of Lynn licensed mobile food trucks to operate at 702 Lynn Way, seven days per week, 9:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come to the podium. State your name and your address.
How's it going? My name-- oh, that's loud, sorry. My name is Justin Morley. I'm a resident, 681 Western Avenue, Lynn. I also manage the Ironbound Marketplace on Mount Vernon Street. I just wanted to come and offer voices of support for the food trucks at the Lynn Way Market on the Lynn Way. I think it's great to have other locations in the city to bring a variety of foods into Lynn. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. And I concur. There's been some, over the years, a few trucks in that area, and they seem to do very well. Now that there's a uniform code for sanitation and all, let's just go all out on this.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor, seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Hogan?
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve. Is there a second? Second. Motion made, seconded. Discussion. Counsel Staubert?
Thank you, Mr. President. While I'm not opposed to food trucks, per se, and I have no problems even with the Food Truck Day down in downtown at Ironbound and all, I am concerned with the impacts that it has on longtime businesses, brick-and-mortar companies, restaurants that have been open in Lynn for long periods of time, that pay a commercial tax rate, that employ Lynn residents, that contribute to our community, our sports teams and all. I think that, at best, we should come up with some mechanism that levels the playing field. You know, we've got establishments. One in particular that I looked up just to see what they pay in taxes is the John's Roast Beef site, somebody that's extremely charitable through the community, as most of those establishments are. That operator pays $12,000 a year in commercial property taxes. If we continue to allow this, we're basically sending a message to these businesses to tear your buildings down, avoid the taxes, and just park a truck on them. You know, they're there 24/7. And instead of having people roll in many times from outside of the community, set up sharp during peak times, take that business away from longtime establishments. I have a problem with that. And until we have a mechanism in place that can level the playing field, I can't support this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Counsel Ozy? One question. What, maybe legal could answer this. What is the fee for a food truck?
I don't know. I don't know if the city clerk may be aware to establish my ordinance.
It's $100. Is that something we could visit in, maybe in the near future? And I agree with Counsel Staubert that maybe we need to level the playing field, and that's something that's probably not changed in a long time.
That is something that absolutely could be changed via ordinance, and I, the Law Department will research. You did accept the state statute that allows every individual department to increase their own fees when they see fit. So that, it may be something that the city clerk could do on.
Put another zero on it. If I may ask a question from the podium? Does anybody mind? Counsel. Do they pay the food tax?
They are obligated to pay the meals tax.
They are obligated? So how do we keep control over that? Like, how do we make sure they pay what they're supposed to?
Much of it's on our system. They pay to the Department of Revenue. The meals tax primarily goes to the state, and we get a small percentage of that. So the state is, the Department of Revenue is the enforcing authority to make sure that all restaurants and food trucks pay the proper meals tax. And you see restaurants regularly being shut down for not paying those meals taxes.
Okay. Counsel Walsh?
Just one thing, you know, I think we should revisit it, but I also think that looking towards the future and looking at a lot of other cities and towns, food trucks are starting to be what people are asking for. You know, and I think they're there for a little while, and, you know, you get a new one that comes in. I don't know that there's a barbecue restaurant anywhere within the vicinity of this, if I can recall. I don't think there is. And I think the younger generation of people are kind of looking towards some of this, which I think we should revisit some of the benefits the city can get from them, but just keep in mind that this is kind of like the new wave, I guess.
Counsel Bud?
Attorney Lamanna? Attorney Lamanna, could we put a cap on this also?
That would, that would need an ordinance change. It would absolutely, the council could cap the number of food trucks in the city. Right now, you're picking a location. It's important to remember, you're not picking the actual operator. My reading in the newspaper, they identified one operator that they plan on using. Once you select the location, nothing prohibits them from using 20, 30, 50 food trucks.
Counsel Chakoudis?
I just want to say, we've had the food trucks down on Mount Vernon Street for almost two years now, I think, Justice. We haven't had a problem down there. The residents down there are all for it. They love it. They still go to the other restaurants that are downtown, but this is something people on their lunch hour walk over to, walk back to work. They're also still going to the other restaurants down there. It's not like they're abandoning them, but it's, we need to, I don't know how I want to say it. We're in the Stone Age in the city sometimes. We're the only city, we're the last one to get anything. The food trucks is nothing new. They've been around for quite a few years now. It's just we're finally getting them in our city.
Counsel Field?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there anybody from 702 Lynn Way here representing them?
Could you come to the podium, sir?
The question I have, it says food trucks, which is plural. Is there a limit on that number? What are the intentions? Is it one? Is it many?
This is for one. I didn't realize until this particular hearing that this was actually for an actual place and not exactly for a particular truck. So when I pulled my petition last year, I thought it was because I only had one truck. When that person decided not to show, I pulled my permit, my petition. This year, when I went back in to discuss it, they said that this is particularly for the space, to allow a food truck to come onto the parking lot. And frankly, the gas station pulled out. We got a lot of backlash because there's no gas station there. The other backlash is, I've got tons of people coming in, waiting for their cars on a constant basis, to come out of the car wash. They meander into the store. They're eating all our potato chips and all the, you know, the junk. And my staff, the same thing. The port hole is gone. Okay, we have 50,000 cars a day going down the Lynn Way. They'd be happy to go to John's Roast Beef. They'd be happy to go to any restaurant that takes a chance to go on the Lynn Way. And all we're trying to do is give somebody something, because there's nothing. I mean, seriously. All the staff, if you were to go to, you know, Bobby Goddaddy, he'd tell you half the people that went into his restaurant were people that worked on the Lynn Way. And frankly, you know, it would be great if some, I mean, a food truck's a Band-Aid. I think we all know that. But at the end of the day, if somebody would take a chance and put something else on the Lynn Way, I think we'd all be better served. So this is just a Band-Aid. And my friend owns the Black Cow up in Hamilton, and I told him one day, you know, you've got competition coming to town. And he says, "The more people we have to come to the city, the better."
So what you're applying for is one truck, correct?
I am applying for one truck, and if I have to down the road, you know, allow for more than one truck, I would do that. But this is really just a starting point.
All right. Can you just state your name for the record, please?
Clifford Danzare.
Counsel Walsh?
Attorney Lamanna, if you could come up for one second. All the locations that we've approved in the city so far, are they commercial properties where these are going?
My understanding, the only two locations is Mount Vernon Street, and if this passes tonight, this would be the second location. It has to be on private property, per the ordinance. So this would be the second location that this council has approved.
But they're on commercial, private property, the ones that have been approved?
Bentwater, too, is a location.
I'm sorry?
Bentwater is also.
Okay, Bentwater is, so to be, now that this would be number three.
So, but they're located at property, on commercial property, on private?
Yeah, it's private property, though. It's not city-owned.
And they pay commercial tax for that property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I should also tell you that before I put my $150,000 digital sign-up, I put a little trailer up front to see if that little trailer would generate more traffic into my store. The product I put on that trailer for 30 days generated in 30 days five times as much products as I would have sold in a typical month. Because of that sign, my store is now doing 15,000 more customers per year because of that sign. The unfortunate part is, the original sign was at the street level, and the new sign is at the tree level, so it's harder for them to see it. But the whole reason why we're doing this is because we're at the light. And the light is where everybody stops, and they're sitting there looking, and, you know, I think it would be, the truck is going to be adjacent to the sign but facing the traffic, so that we could try to at least take advantage of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Counsel Staubert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one more comment. This isn't about food trucks. It's about our businesses being the backbone of our community. And I don't think it's fair to put them at a competitive disadvantage. I mean, sometime down the line, does Total Wine come out with, you know, mobile booze trucks that they strategically place in certain locations at peak times? Would we want one of them parked at the Building 19 parking lot on a 4th of July weekend or something like that? Again, it would put Lynn Way Liquors at a competitive disadvantage, and I wouldn't support that either. And it's for those reasons that I'm opposed to this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Motion made, seconded. Roll call. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre, absent. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
No.
No. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinances. We have an ordinance amending the ordinance regulating wireless communication facilities to be located in the City of Lynn in public ways. It's to be set down for a public hearing? No.
That's actually for a public hearing tonight.
Oh, okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor, seeing none? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Seconded. Discussion. Counsel Ozy? Yeah. Mr. President, could somebody explain what the amendment? Mike, could you come up to the podium, please?
Good evening, councils. This ordinance is to regulate the telecommunications devices being placed on poles across the city to ensure that when the individuals or the firms get a special permit or permission from the council to put them in place, that they're put in place in such a manner that they're not hazard, that they're not an inconvenience, that they're safe, essentially. So there's regulations in there requiring engineering that the work be only performed during certain hours, that the Inspection Services Department will do inspections on them, regulate when they can do it, and then ensure that should the use be abandoned, that it's taken down properly, and it's not left on the pole. And if there is a problem with the pole, sometimes these devices are put on the poles, and the poles aren't as stable as they could be, and they'll start to lean, that there's somebody in the city who will then respond, ISD, to ensure that the situation is taken care of right away.
And these were not already in the, obviously, in the comprehensive ordinance that we had originally?
No, that's the, that telecommunications ordinance controls telecommunications equipment placed on private property only, not within the city public, on public property.
So this would be for equipment on public property?
Yeah. You see them across the city, the brown, oblong, metal objects put on the top of telephone poles, there'd be a meter on the pole, and they create a network of telecommunications signals. They're not on private property, so they're not subject to our zoning ordinance in regards to the size, placement, et cetera, et cetera, of them. So this provides regulation, city regulations, that go above and beyond just the permission to put it on the pole.
So this, some of those, I've had complaints on them. They're smaller, and they're put on usually the electric boxes next to the poles. Is that correct?
Yes. On a lot of them, there'll be, on all of them, there'll be a box mounted on the pole, and then at the very top of the pole, there'll be a metal object, like I said, oblong, between 36 and 48 inches in height, sitting at the top of the, very, very top of the wooden pole.
So which, I'm a little bit confused, because this is an amendment, so there is an ordinance existing regulating these antennas?
Yes, our zone ordinance regulates not these antennas, but it regulates telecommunications devices, towers, and antenna attachments to buildings on private property.
Okay. So my question, then, is we're, we have an amendment before us, and I'm not clear as to what the actual ordinance is. Does it require a special permit? Should we have Attorney Lamanna answer that?
For federal law, it does require a special permit for all of these facilities. It's very difficult to turn these down, and if this is not passed by April 15, it does have some aesthetic positions in here, that the color, the height can be limited. If it's not passed, this ordinance is not passed by April 15, it would not be able to pass it at a future date. The mayor went to a seminar about three weeks ago and made us aware of this, and it was a good catch, in the sense that this ordinance provides the council some tools to actually deny some of these moving forward.
Okay.
And those tools, we will lose on April 15.
Okay. I like that. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Jim. Counsel Walsh, do you have a question?
Wanted to speak to that for a second. As the chair of the Utilities Committee, we've had a few of these come in, you know, the last few months, and some of them, the sheet, the size of the sheet applied with it. They were like four by eight boxes on the side of poles. And, you know, as a ward counselor, you can imagine what those would cause if they end up in front of your house, my house, or anybody's house. So we wanted to deny them initially, but we found that, you know, we should have some ordinance in place in order to regulate these. You would get a lot of complaints if these continue to go up in the size. At one point, they were individual providers, but now they are joint pole operations, which is allowed under some federal communication guidelines. And because they're jointly now involved with two providers, the boxes have to get bigger than what you see out there now. So I think this gives us some ability to kind of regulate that, and it's important for us to do that.
Anyone else? Motion's been made, seconded. Roll call. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre, absent. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer? Yes. Next, there's a bond order. This is not a public hearing. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the order, please. Order that the City of Lynn appropriates the amount of $4,237,788 for the purpose of paying costs of the design and replacement of the roof at the Lynn Vocational and Technical Institute Annex located at 80 Neptune Boulevard in Lynn, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which proposed repair would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program, and for which the city may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. Set amount to be extended under the direction of the school committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under MGL Chapter 44, MGL Chapter 70B, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The city acknowledges that the MSBA grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the city incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the city, provided further that any grant from the city may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 79 and 5800 percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or to the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the city and the MSBA. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost or issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And finally, the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to qualify under MGL Chapter 44A any and all bonds or notes authorized by this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as such officials of the Commonwealth may require in connection therewith. What's the wish of the council? Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Discussion. Roll call. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre, absent. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes. I just want to make a mention that Counsel Lapierre got called away earlier for work. He said he was going to try to make it here tonight, but I just want to make sure everybody was aware of that. Also, on the vote that we just took for that bond, it's going to cost the city over a few years roughly about $800,000. In return, we get over $4.2 million, so it makes total sense to be doing this. It comes down to roughly about $100,000 a year is what we're going to be paying back. Public hearings to be set down.
We have the petition of Jared Fahlite, 50 Porter Street, Melrose, Mass., to operate Bostica LLC, a marijuana cultivation facility at 71 Linden Street. Seven days per week operation to require 24-hour care. Petition of National Grid to install a new pad for a 300K VA transformer to convert the load supply from the Hart Street area of Lynn network from secondary network service to radio service. Set them down. Motion made.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We got to go back to the bond. We need an emergency on that?
Yes.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Roll call. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre, absent. Counsel Ozy?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Staubert?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Seer?
Yes.
Committee reports. Utilities Committee, Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
License Committee, Counsel Walsh.
Big night for me. Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Motion made.
Seconded. Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded. Seconded.
Say it again.
Seconded.
I heard the second.
It's third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Committee of the whole, Counsel Barton?
I was just up something for discussion, that's all. Nothing to vote on.
All right. Old business. Counsel Staubert?
Thank you, Mr. President. The petition on National Grid, public hearing?
Yep.
Did we vote on that? To set down that public hearing?
Yeah, we did. I read them both.[1562.23]
resolution regarding relocation of the Kevin A. Cahill Square.
Whereas Kevin A. Cahill, born and raised in Lynn and lived much of his life in America Park in West Lynn, Kevin graduated from Lynn English High School in 1966 and soon after joined the United States Marine Corps. And whereas Kevin A. Cahill served in Vietnam with the men of Charlie Company, 1st Battalion, 1st Marine Regiment, 1st Marine Division, where his brothers considered him a Marines' Marine. And whereas Kevin A. Cahill was killed in action on October 12, 1967 at Kwai Tree near the DMZ in Vietnam. And whereas Kevin A. Cahill's name is etched on the Lynn Vietnam Veterans Memorial and at the Vietnam Wall in Washington, DC on Panel 27D, Line 93, where he and over 57,000 other men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in Vietnam will always be remembered. And whereas Kevin A. Cahill and fellow Marines were immortalized in the book Lions of Medina that detailed their service and sacrifice during what some of the hardest fighting in the Vietnam War. And therefore, be it resolved that the Lynn City Council remembers and honors the service and sacrifice of this American hero, and be it further resolved that the Lynn City Council wishes to move Kevin A. Cahill Square from the intersection of Mazza Road and Linfield Street to the intersection of Boston Street and Myrtle Street, and that a copy of these resolutions be spread upon the records of the Lynn City Council.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Seconded. Discussion. Counsel Walsh.
If I could, I just wanted to note that, you know, West Lynn has a rich history, like a lot of parts of the city, with veterans, and I think that it's important that people get to see the names that are out there and then inquire about why they're there, you know? I was kind of negligent myself. I didn't know who Austin was, you know, in Austin Square. But you start doing some research, and I think everybody should do that, and kind of understand the sacrifices these families have given. I think we drive by and we use the names every day of all the streets in the city, but I think it's something we should reflect on and note that these are people, not just names that are streets or intersections. Thank you.
Hey, Counsel Walsh. Counsel Bud.
At this time, I'd ask Mike Sweeney to come up, please, to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. Mr. President, through you to the members, I want to thank the council, in particular Counsel Barton, for his hard work in making this possible, and also, like everything takes everybody involved, Counsel Walsh, because it's going in his, in his ward in West Lynn. The word hero that was used in the resolution, I think that word is overused today in our society, and I think when you hear the words and you hear the story of Lance Corporal Cahill, there's no finer word to use, no more true word to use than the word hero. And I just want to, one more time, thank the council for making this easy. I think the reason for the move, it was dedicated years ago on Linfield Street, and just a much more appropriate location for the family felt, so we were able to sit down with them and work with it. But again, would not have been able to do it without the hard work of the city council. I thank you personally, Counsel Barton, for everything, making this possible. And I think what we should do, if I could be so, well, I want to, before I, I want to say that the Cahill family is here with us tonight, and I'd like to ask this Gold Star family to please rise just to be recognized.
of Lynn Veterans Council, George Fitz Henry. And the Veterans Council is in complete, complete support of this. And with that, before I, if there's any questions, I want to, one more time, thank one more person in particular, Terry Young, for putting this together. I know we sent it over to her, and it was, she's very, always helpful in this one in particular. So with that, if there's any questions, I'll stop.
Any more discussion? Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre, absent. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Counsel Staubid?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sear.
Yes. Before we go any further, I'd also like to say something real quick. I, Council President Cahill was the council president before myself, and the Cahill family has been a major part of the City of Lynn for many years, have contributed in many ways, and as we've all seen tonight, given the ultimate sacrifice. But I know them very well, and I know how they are. Jane is always involved in the community, and Tom, and their son Dan, and their family. Just want to say thank you. Thank you. Any new business? Counsel Walsh.
If I could, I just wanted to wish my daughter a happy birthday. Tomorrow's her birthday, Jaela. I know she's at home, and I just wanted to wish her a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
A motion to wish her a happy birthday.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Motion made, seconded.
Seconded.
Roll call. Roll call.
Really?
Yeah. We got to do a roll call. It's a happy birthday roll call.
Happy birthday roll call. Counsel Barton?
Happy birthday, yes.
Oh, my God. Counsel Chakoudas?
Happy birthday, yes.
Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Counsel Field?
Happy birthday, Jaela, yes.
Counsel Hogan?
Happy birthday.
Counsel Lapierre, absent. Happy birthday. Counsel Lozey?
Happy birthday, Jaela, yes.
Counsel Net?
Happy birthday, yes.
Counsel Staubid?
Happy birthday, Jaela, yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Happy birthday. Thank you.
Counsel Sear?
Happy birthday.
This is the first.
Motion adjourned.